Yo, yo, yo.
Hey.
Another one?
Another one.
People don't know it's the second one of the night.
Yeah, um, we have with us here Jennifer Trotz Consolino, who is currently running for, who is currently a trustee on the Homer Glen board, who is not running for reelection, but she is instead running for uh, school district thirty-three C, correct?
Yes, Homer thirty-three C Consolidated District.
All right, uh, probably bring the mic closer to yourself so we can hear you, otherwise we're deaf here.
This is better.
Yeah, um, so welcome on, uh, wanted to get you on here as well, um. You're obviously part of my local community, um, and I would like to get some information, maybe spread some information out to the local voters who need to go out and vote. You know, actually make a, make actually a dent in uh, in voting.
Yeah, so whoever sees this, go vote.
Yeah, whoever sees this, go vote, yeah, a hundred percent.
Whoever's, I mean, well, even, I know, like, we have elections too coming up, right, uh, in Pelus.
I mean, there's probably local elections going on everywhere.
Salient election, general election is April first for all of us.
Yeah, so, so there is an election basically everywhere.
So whoever sees this, yeah.
In your township and uh,
You gonna go vote, Marson?
I probably should.
You probably should, you, the answer should be yes, I'm gonna go vote, yeah.
Yes, I'll go vote in the morning.
We're gonna be over here discussing how you should go vote, Marson's gonna be over here like, I should, yeah, yeah, that's, that's very reassuring to everybody else.
I'm on the ballot, I'm running.
I wonder from what position, uh, the school board?
No.
Uh, regardless, um, welcome on, um, wanted to get some information from you, obviously, on uh, what the uh, what the job entails uh, for being on a school board for uh, thirty-three C, obviously, that's for the, uh, what, what age uh, children is that for the school for?
So you're talking about pre-K through eighth grade.
Okay, so.
And there's about six buildings, six schools within the Homer three-three, thirty-three C district. You have Goodings Grove, Hadley Middle School, Homer Junior High, Schilling, Young and Butler.
A lot of schools in the Homer Glen area, huh?
Approximately three thousand seven hundred and eleven kids.
Wow, so we have a lot of young kids, a lot, a lot of little kids in the, in the city, huh?
Yes.
In the town.
Yeah, well, and we, we have.
A village, because we're a village, right?
Uh, yes, so village and township and then Homer thirty-three C mostly services Homer Glen and Lockport.
Hmm, okay, so we got basically two, uh, Homer Glen is a village, right? Lockport is a city?
Lockport is a city, um, Village of Homer Glen population is approximately twenty, a little over twenty-four thousand. Lockport's population is a little over twenty-six thousand.
Oh, so there's not big of a, that big of a difference in terms of population, I thought it'd be much bigger for Lockport.
It's, you know, so we, we all come from the city and so look at it like in a city you have it run by districts.
Yeah.
An alderman represent you from each district.
Right.
In Homer Glen, we're a village, they don't have to be from a specific village, or, or sorry, specific district. Like, we have one subdivision that has like three people representing it on the village board, which I don't agree with. But, um, I, I believe in fair representation, so I kinda do uh, like the aldermanic aspect better.
Okay.
Yeah, we, Pelus is alderman.
Yes.
Cause I'm, I've been getting a lot of things in the mail.
I mean, you know, it's election time.
You know what, I know who I'm not voting for, there's one alderman who was supposed to fix my driveway for three years now and he still hasn't.
Oh, boy.
And so the neighboring alderman came to my house.
Really?
And he's the one that talked to uh, sanitation or whoever, public works and they came out and they still didn't do it, but at least he actually came out physically.
Did he offer you like free garbage cans or something?
I'll take them.
Anything free is free, right?
That's a city of Chicago thing.
The water, the water collection, the water collection jugs.
Oh, the, the rain, the.
The rain barrels?
All right, but see that, there's the bribe, there you go, that's what they do.
That's, it's a good program, I guess, right, but it's just, you know, it's, you know, yeah, it's part of a bribe, a hundred percent. Uh, but yes, so do tell us uh, more about the uh, the schools, how, you know, what kind of shape the schools are in first of all, but then in general, uh, more about proficiency, you know, scores and uh, and enrollment and, and stuff like that.
And your plan?
Yeah, what's your, your, your plan, yeah, we, we, we'll ask you the questions upfront, you just give us, you just.
Just, just go with it.
Go with it, that's right, that's the way we do it, yeah.
We'll ask questions along the way.
Well, you know, you guys are really pushing on like, why is it important to come out for the school board, you know, elections? And so, you know, something that I think really all of us need to look at is, you know, seventy-two, seventy-five percent of your property taxes go to the school districts.
Yeah.
People don't realize it's far more than what we pay into the township, what we pay into the village. Your tax levies from your school districts are three quarters of your property tax bill. And so, you know, when you're doing the average tax rate per household, um, for thirty-three C, for example, is three point eight nine one three, which equals about, you know, just a little under four thousand dollars, if you think about that, that's a hefty, you know, number. And, you know, it's, why, why did I want to run for school board? Um, I, I started paying attention and going to school board meetings in twenty-twenty, I think a lot of parents did. Uh, I met a lot of other candidates, previous and current candidates, um, that they were getting up and speaking, these are people I'd never met my entire life living in Homer Glen. I've lived here since two thousand and nine, before that I was in the city of Chicago. Um, you know, I, I'm a mom, I have a daughter with special needs, but I sent my daughter to a private school. And I have no shame in that, you know, I, I'm proud that I sent my daughter to a private school. She's in a very small setting, small classroom, um, you know, with it being private, it's, it's a much different dynamic. Uh, I'm not hitting on the curriculum at all with the public schools. Uh, I try to not get as political because as a village trustee, I'm in a non-partisan, non-partisan position, which means I'm non-political and as a school board member, you're supposed to be non-political as well. So it's a non-partisan race again, it's not about politics, it shouldn't be about politics. Um, but I do believe there's a lot of common issues and so once I started going to the school board meetings, I started realizing, you know, kids are in shutdown mode, my daughter being in private school, she was only shut down for several months. It was a scary decision to send her back to school full-time that fall in twenty-twenty. And then there were all these other children, you know, that she's friends with from the neighborhood, that couldn't go back to school, some of them didn't go back to school for almost two years. And all I could think about was with my daughter with her special needs, you know, it's, it took a lot to get my daughter as a little girl to learn how to socialize. When COVID in twenty-twenty hit, she was seven years old, you know, and so I didn't want my child who I'd worked so hard to teach to socialize and go through occupational therapy for a number of issues.
Right.
I didn't want her to lose those skills, you know, socialization was a huge piece.
Especially at those ages, you know, for all the kids that we would say, you know?
And so it was a leap of faith to send her to school, but I wanted my baby to thrive.
Yeah.
And so, and we didn't, go ahead.
Let me move this microphone a little closer to you, you're good, you're good, you're good, here you go.
Sorry, thank you, um, you know.
I'm, I'm, I don't know, something about it, I don't know what it is. Sorry.
I've got really touchy mics on, in the village, so we kinda hold them, you know, further back, so maybe it's me.
They probably paid more for them.
Let me move in close and softly, like, there you go.
There you go, there you go. I'm sorry I cut you off.
No, that's okay, and, you know, that's when I really, I, I didn't just think about my daughter during the pandemic, I thought about everybody's children, you know, I, I'm a parent, I had, you know, my daughter goes to all these different like sports and social things, all these other children, and I saw everybody suffering across the board. So in twenty-twenty, I started um, campaigning to run for village trustee for Homer Glen. And while I was doing that, you, you know, you meet all these people who are coming out of the woodwork, who are now opening their eyes during COVID about the schools, what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, and, and these people are going and they're speaking up at school board meetings. And so I was already speaking out at township meetings and village board meetings because I was paying attention to things that were going on that I didn't like going on in the government level. So then I'm like, well, I should go with my friends and support them and do the same thing at the, you know, the school board meetings. And what I saw was, you know, you have a lot of people that don't know how to speak and they're terrified and they're terrified of the repercussions if they speak out. Uh, people were just animals on social media, um, and they didn't.
They're, they're trying to send the FBI to the school board meetings.
Trying to have a little bit of compassion here, just a smidge, um, I've, I've been docked, beat up, my, my daughter, you know, like, I'm, I'm very grateful sometimes that she isn't a bubble at a private school because I can't imagine how they would eat her alive, especially with her special needs, um, you know, the people that are constantly attacking me for any of my views or how I vote on the board, um, and that should never come down on people's families.
Yeah, it should never get personal.
It's person, that's right, and politics should not be personal, it's business and, and that's why I really, I try to keep, I have my political views, trust me, and on some things they're very extreme, but I've never made a board decision that reflected that, you know, I always, I was elected for the purpose of sticking to certain campaign promises and I've always tried to do my best to keep the political views out of that, what do my constituents want?
This is the most important part.
So when you go to these school board meetings, and I still see it today, and when you watch the videos and stuff or whether I attend a meeting or not, um, there's a, I wouldn't call it so much as a disconnect, is they're very dismissive, a lot of these school board members, and it's, it's at each district level, they're not listening to the people who come and talk. And so it could be a parent talking about a serious situation with their child, um, it could be a parent talking about an IEP issue that's getting missed or not addressed properly, um.
What does, what does that stand for?
IEP, um, educational plan, independent and, and, eh, I'm sorry, can't talk, um, educational plans. And so for, for children with special needs and I started, like, you cannot be dismissive. It's also part of the reason why I ran for the village of Homer Glen, you cannot dismiss the people who put you into office. School board members are elected officials, they are there to work on your behalf, they're there to represent you. They're supposed to be representing, you know, uh, a school board is there to reflect and represent the core values of its community, the beliefs, you know, and they're, you know, you saw this, you, you saw this uh, just blank stare on a lot of people where they just didn't care what people were saying when you were going to these school board meetings. And so I always tried to speak from the heart and speak honestly, once I got elected, I still continued to go, um, because you had so many parents and you had so many tax-paying residents that they don't know what to say, they don't know how to vocalize it. They're like, hey, the school districts are just, they're, they're raping us, right, with these tax increases. And once you start opening your eyes and looking and doing the research, we started noticing from like twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-five, each school board district has been, you know, pushing their tax levy, the, the maximum amount allowed, every single one. And so when I and the same other people that try to be vocal, go to these school board meetings and we're like, hey, you know, can you please just stop and look at your budget, can you see what you can cut out? Because what I learned to do, I got elected in April of twenty-twenty-one, within our first six months being on the board, we had did a budgetary cut ten percent across the board, right, our staff didn't like it.
Of course, because it's, 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 you know.
And then we did a hiring freeze and we also did a um, salary freeze, just for six months, right? We're like, let's get our house in order, let's look at where we can cut. And amazing thing happened, we did, we didn't have to cut any services, nobody even noticed.
Right.
But the hardest part of doing it was actually sitting down and taking the time with board members and staff members and saying, we can do this, right? And we did it and nothing scary happened, right, the world didn't fall apart, Chicken Little didn't fall out of the sky. We, we didn't cut taxes, but we were able to freeze them.
Yeah, keep them from going up.
And guess what, did it in twenty-twenty-one, did it in twenty-twenty-two, did it in twenty-twenty-three, did it just again in twenty-twenty-four. And nobody lost services. So when I started.
There is a way.
There is a way.
There's always a way.
Yes.
Yeah, well, you would, you would, well, yeah, I mean, at the end, at the end goal, there is always a way, you just have to put the effort into it.
Well, and when I would go and I would say this, just the same way that I just said it to you guys, right? Sincere, calm, I wasn't screaming, I wasn't calling people names and I was dismissed and they were nasty and they, you know.
On the school board.
The school board members, and it was like, you're not supposed to get up and speak here, you don't have a child in this school. It's like, excuse me, but.
Who's paying, who's, who's paying?
My tax dollars, everybody else's tax dollars that voted for me, seniors who are on fixed incomes, veterans, and, and, and people who did have children that went to your district, but now they've moved on, right? So you're telling me that we don't have a right to say anything? And I'm getting mocked on social media now because it's like, well, you don't have a child in the district, you can't run. Yes, I can.
Better reason to run.
Yes, I should, and now that I've learned about doing your due diligence as a fiduciary, you know, representative, of course, I know what to do, um, you know.
And now you, now you actually also have experience because you, you already been on the board, so you already know how that works.
And I'm also not a reperstanter, you know, the school boards, what I, I realize is a lot of the members, I think they're intimidated about doing the hard part of their job, which is doing the due diligence, learning how to look at a budget, learning how to look at the tax levy and say, you know what, what can we cut, what can we change? Because when, you know, like I said, all of us started paying attention in twenty-twenty, you start seeing the levies. And so the kids weren't going to school and they were cutting educational services, but they were increasing administrative salaries, they were increasing pensions and benefits, they were increasing maintenance and they were increasing um, transportation services.
For sitting at home?
Yes.
Wow.
And so.
That's, that's one heck of a, that's, that's one, that's one, that's a good job right there, if you're just sitting at home and just getting, you know, increases in your pay.
Thirty, thirty-three C is a primary example, so in June of twenty-twenty, um, I was at a meeting and I can remember the superintendent came in and, and he was trying to garner support, right, for, for being in office. And I'm like, my first question was like, hey, didn't you just raise your salaries for administration by three percent? And everybody in the room, their jaws dropped. And I, and he didn't want to answer and I'm like, I had to ask it a second time, he's like, yes, yes, I did. I'm like, okay, that's all I need to know, because children still weren't going to school, but you gotta raise.
Yeah, you gotta raise.
Um, you got higher pension benefits, you know, I, I just, those were those things that, that made me shudder and think, okay, no, we need to be more vocal, we need to tell these people, you gotta stop the bleeding and I haven't seen it since, it's now twenty-twenty-five. Every levy for every school district is insane, they go the max amount, they don't ever tell you that they wanna try and cut the budget, they just say, oh, we need, we need, it's for the kids, it's for the kids. Yes, of course we need updates, yes, we need improvements. But when you come back to us, you know, like you guys were talking about earlier, the proficiency, proficiency ratings, you know, so for, for thirty-three C proficiency ratings, um, they, they like to brag and say, oh, but it's, it's way higher than the Illinois state level, right? So Illinois average, yeah, cause that's something, there we go. Um, Illinois state, you know, is at uh, thirty-nine point four percent for reading, twenty-seven point nine for math, all right? Thirty-three C, and they're talking about grade school children.
Wait, those are numbers for the state or for the thirty-three C?
That's for the state of Illinois, okay?
Wow, such high bar.
Let me repeat that, so almost forty percent for reading, so six out of ten kids can't read.
Proficiently.
At their grade level and twenty-seven point nine, so let's say close to thirty percent for math, yeah. And so thirty-three C is at sixty-four percent for reading and fifty cent, fifty percent for math.
Well, way above standards for the, yeah.
But.
It's not a good.
No, no, that is not good.
But they brag about this and, you know, and you're just like, well, that's great that some of them can, but why aren't we shooting for a higher mark?
I mean, with the, with the, with the financial help that they have, well, help, not only help, but the financial income they have, I mean, the numbers they get from a town like ours, you will think that that money is actually being spent efficiently and used somehow to improve those programs or those numbers.
And there seem, you know, like you don't hear any plan, like they're very dismissive about it again, they don't give you an explanation. I did hear, and I don't believe it was at thirty-three C, I think it was at the, the high school uh, meeting where it was like, but their well-being is what's more important, of course our children's well-being is important, but so is their education, so is their.
That's why they're there.
The level of what, what they're accomplishing, right? And I haven't seen or heard any plan, um, or any implementate, implement, I'm sorry, implementation as to how they're going to achieve higher marks, right?
Yeah.
They, they don't have anything in place, um, you know, so when you look at what, and, and, and I, I do, I look, I'm, I'm very policy-driven. Um, I like to have something, you know, written out, I like to have laws written out, um, I love creating legislation, I love to read legislation. And so, you know, when I really tried to look up, what do school board members do, what are, what are their, you know, what's their job role, what is their responsibility? So it isn't just the budgets, it's setting policies, right, I already do that. Um, it's also regarding hiring and evaluating your school superintendent, you know? You hire them, you fire them, you evaluate them.
Yeah.
If your school superintendent is failing the community, failing to keep children from a quality education, you have every right to hold them under scrutiny. But that, I, I hear on numerous levels with different schools, just, oh, you can't say anything about them, they're wonderful. Well, your numbers don't show it, right? So.
It's a numbers-driven game at the end of the day.
Show me the plan on how you're gonna fix it and, you know, it's budget management. Um, we, you know, our job is, as school board members is to monitor student achievement and program effectiveness. I never hear any criticism of any programs on these schools, it's just sometimes they'll sit there and say, we need more or we need to cut this one, right? But they don't say why and I don't see any other plans in place to replace those, right? Um, you know, ensure accountability and a district's performance, you want them to progress. You never hear the school board members ever talk about that, nothing is ever discussed on this level. You know, when you, the best education people could do is to go to a board meeting and just sit there. For, for your, any, any of your school districts, right, just sit there quietly, you don't have to sign in, you don't have to say anything, just sit and listen, right? Listen to what goes on around you and how your school board members talk about what they're voting yes on. Nine times out of ten, it is a unanimous yes, there's no discussion. It is the most appalling thing in the world.
Where is the discussion happening?
There's, yeah, no, i- if there's no discussion, then that means they're leaving it up, and this is my opinion, right, because I don't know. Um, but I can speculate pretty, pretty well from, from the field that I'm working in right now. They're sitting there and they're being told by staff and their superintendent what to do because, well, they think that they're the experts.
It's for the children.
They're not the experts, you were elected.
To be the expert.
Not to be the expert.
Well, yeah.
And you know what, I'm not an expert, I, I will admit, every day is hard, some days are grasping straws. Um, you know, one day people love you and the next they hate you. Um, but I always try my hardest to do my due diligence and to read through everything and, and I gotta tell you guys, I get packets and I have board meetings twice a month and these packets have over a thousand pages, sometimes.
You gotta submit to ChatGPT and cut it down.
You, you almost kinda wanna just open a bottle of wine before you open and read all this.
That's where the decisions really can go one way or another.
I've had to invest in a lot of reading glasses since I've been on the board, but I mean, like, it's, it's hard, right? It's time-consuming and school board members don't get paid.
And it's not your only job.
And I only get paid um, six thousand dollars a year as a uh, village trustee, which comes to five thousand and twenty-five dollars after taxes get taken out, so I really don't consider, it's not even enough to cover gas. But you, but you don't do it because of that, you do it because you wanna be a civil servant, you wanna do the right thing. And, you know, the important piece when I, when you look up what school board members are supposed to be doing, is they are supposed to be the, the middle piece, right, between the school and between the community. You are supposed to, to help engage the community and, and your staff, right? You're, you're supposed to be that bond, that glue that makes it work. And, you know, it's, that's why I don't think it should just be, you know, what I, I get constantly told if I go to a school board being, oh, you're not a teacher, you're not, you know, you're not on this end of it. You know, I worked for uh, a year from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three with the Will County Regional Office of Education and I worked with grant funding with homeless children. And that job opened my eyes up to so much with the Illinois State Board of Education and how there are just, you know, some policies that they have in place, I got to be familiar with and there's a lot of policies that aren't written out and I find that disturbing. Because when you call down there to Springfield, everybody's just like, hmm, that's a good question. They don't like to put a lot of things in writing and so the school boards need, they need policies, right? For the people who don't understand all the interactions that are behind the scenes, you need board members to have a s- a set policy that helps them implement what's best for the children. It helps to teach them the process of everything. You know, if you want our children to succeed, you need good policies, you need good people, you need qual- everything is about quality. But if you don't have anything in place in front of you that directs you, directs staff, that's your guide, that's your bible and, and I love having things in writing so that people don't make as many mistakes, they have good direction, you know, and this is what school board members should be doing and they're not doing it. And sometimes I think it's because they're intimidated by staff or superintendents who tell them you don't know what you're doing. And I've actually heard that said.
I mean, that wouldn't shock me at all if that was the truth, I mean, at the end of the day, wait a minute, you're gonna tell us what we're to do? We've been here much longer than you've been here, we know better.
Because that, I think, would also explain when we're saying, why don't they say anything, why isn't there a discussion, right? Your job is discussion, your job is to read through the legislation or the tax levies that you're about to pass or the increased spending that you're about to pass. And you have to take the time to do it, I know it's tedious and it's difficult for some people and if that's.
People don't like people screaming in the, in the boardroom, let's say, if you have, if you're having a meeting like that of some sort in terms of budget or whatever, you don't want people there to be, you know, raising their voice or opposing your ideas or something like that, so we're just, we're just doing the, you know, behind the scenes.
I have people that come in and people that are very sweet and they're very respectful. Then I have people who have absolutely no concept of decorum that come and speak before my board. I've had people that have come and personally attacked me and said horrible, false things and you, you know what, I've, I've learned that.
This is uh, Homer Glen?
This is of course.
Homer Glen, yeah.
I think there's something.
I mean, I love the city of Homer Glen and the, and the village and the, and the township and everything, but the politics of Homer Glen are next level, huh?
Oh, our politics are ugly, um, but I truly think there's something in the water, but anyway.
Which water, the American water?
That water with gold flakes that we spend like five to six hundred dollars a month on, oh my god.
Does it have like?
Do you have well?
Oh, I got well.
You lucky.
They sprinkle like a little bit of gold there or what?
It's like Goldschlager, right? But, you know, you, you have to have thick skin, you know, and, and sometimes it does get very contentious. But you're dealing with parents, you know, and unfortunately, I, I had to witness and go to meetings and speak up where, you know, parents were upset over the pandemic, right? And they would get up and they would speak and they would cry and the stories they told and these board members just looked at them with blank stares, they didn't say anything, some of them didn't even look at them, so they would take notes, they would be playing with their phones, they hadn't, it was like, hello, these people need you, you, you got elected for this, right? You, people need you to listen to what they're telling you. And I think it's just as important when you're talking about these tax levies, you know, we have, thirty-three C is actually been um, over budgeting, you wanna call it, or over taxing us, right? So they, they have like the surplus of like twelve million, you know, for the past few years. And the reason they did this was because, you know, we had, they had over twelve million surplus last year. They're sweeping it so that they can do repairs, right? In January, um, last year, and I, I took a screenshot, see, I was doing my homework for you guys. So January of twenty-twenty-four, Homer District thirty-three C, OK's plan to connect junior high and middle school, adding a gym, a cafeteria and library, right? So that's great, but normally those kind of improvements, because they cost so much money, they're supposed to come before the public at referendum. So when you, you hide this little surplus going on, they can just bring it up to their little board and, okay, we're gonna do this. We don't have to have public approval, isn't that lovely?
Oh, that's very lovely.
So I'm very big, anybody who's ever watched my meetings that are like six to eight hours long with the village of Homer Glen, um, but we'll keep that on for now, um, you know, I'm very huge on transparency and accountability and I think, you know, all elected officials should be held accountable and transparent.
I think transparency and accountability are making a comeback slowly, I think they are.
I think so too.
I think so, it's uh, it's starting to show up in different places and I think it's, it's obviously a very good thing, that's what we want.
It's, it's also, as I say, is uh, it's a two-way street though as well, because you as the person have to, um, let's say, you know, me as a parent or somebody that goes to one of these board meetings, I have to hold that person accountable. If it's a, if it's somebody on a school board, you know.
Well, first you gotta show up.
They, they need, sure, but they need to be accountable, but you have to hold them accountable and you have to ask the questions and you have to, you have to make them answer for, for any decisions they make, any policies they, they push through. Like, it's your job as part of your community to ask those questions.
Also as their taxpayer, paying for the whole school district, right?
You have a right to know.
Yeah.
But you, you have a right to know, but I, I think you have a, you have a, you have a kind of a due diligence to hold that person responsible.
Maybe I should start going to these meetings, but I yell for like random reasons, so I, I, you know.
Can I sneak in with you?
Of course, you don't have to sneak, just go together, we can podcast live from a, from a board, board, board meeting.
You know, it's life, I, a lot of people can't go to meetings and I can remember some of these school board meetings that I went to, like, you would have seniors that would come out, right? And I'm like, you gotta make sure you go out and vote and they're like, my, my vote is useless, you know, I'm like, no, it's not, your vote is never useless. I, and I, I, I feel sorry for people who get discouraged like that. And I, I, I feel sorry for people who get discouraged like that.
That is very common for a lot of people, like even in general.
In general.
Yeah.
The majority of people in Homer Township are not registered to vote.
Yeah.
Isn't that appalling?
Really?
Think about that. You know, I, I think our turnout for this last election was.
For Homer Township?
So for, for Homer Township was like, what, five thousand voters?
How many people live in Homer Township? I thought it was like thirty thousand people.
Forty-one thousand.
Holy smokes, bro.
I'm like.
People, get your ass out of your house.
First time I ran, the first time I ran, and these were people that I, that live around my house, my neighbors, like three of them, I'm not making, like, left, right and back. And, and they're all like in their sixties and above, they all grew up in the city. Nobody was registered to vote. I was like, what? Couple of them had to go unregistered just so they could vote for me. And I'm like, how, how, how do you get this far in life or live in the state?
But I think that's changing, I think that's changing.
If you register to vote for at a national level, aren't you automatically registered to vote for your?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
Dude, a lot of people didn't vote for nationally even, dude. I mean, if you look at the last election, there was what, a hundred and sixty million votes?
Yeah.
The country population is three fifty? That's less than half.
You know, I'm, I'm a proud military wife. My husband is still active military and it's like, my husband has gone and did combat in, in countries that people die for the right to vote. And so I take, when somebody says to me, I'm not gonna go and vote, and I'm just like, well, then you better not complain about anything.
That's exactly what I say.
You have no right to be upset or tell me about your politics, you know, and I, I take it, that, I take very much to heart.
My best friend doesn't, he, last time he didn't vote. And I'm like, did you vote? He's like, no. I'm like, he was complaining about something about government. I'm like, you can't say anything, you didn't vote. Your, your discretion ends there.
You can't give the time of day to somebody who, who doesn't, you know, like, I, I understand people have their reasoning, but I have my reasoning too. And, and my thoughts and opinions matter just as much as anybody else's.
One hundred percent.
So.
And then the excuse that, oh, I can't make it that day or.
I mean, you have early voting, dude, there's so many different ways to go vote.
It's, you have mail-in, I mean, like, it's so convenient.
Best ones.
You can register, you know, up to a certain point, you can register online. It's almost like they're handing it to you, but because it's not an app on a phone. You still have people.
Hold on a second, let's back up to that, let's back up to that.
I don't want that either.
Let's back up to that because, because, no, I'm not talking about the mail-in voting, I'm talking about if you wanna be.
App on a phone now.
If you, an app on a phone, you can use blockchain. All right, this is my, I gotta throw my two cents about crypto and Bitcoin and whatnot.
Here we go.
But blockchain will result, will fix that. It would fix that or you just have to be used the right way.
No, just make it an advertisement before YouTube video starts that you have to vote real quick.
Bro, you know how many fake votes you get? You know what I mean? I mean, there'd be, you know, that's, that's the thing is that you can, you know, you can come up with different ideas, but who's gonna use them in what way? You know what I mean? You know, ma, best in person, make it a holiday. Make it a holiday and then in person, so.
You know, it, it's, voting is important.
A hundred percent.
Your tax levies are important, your voice is important. You know, thirty-three C, for example, when it comes to the past five years, you know, they increased every levy to the maximum that they possibly could, okay? They didn't give it a glance, they never looked at their budgets, they never did, never did any budgetary cuts. And so to me, that's like, where are you doing your due diligence? Where is your fiscal responsibility? And these were people who were incumbents that just sat there for years, some of them. Now you have a couple more incumbents that are running again. And then you've got, I think, four of us that are not incumbents running. You know, fresh blood is good, right? You know, parents being on a board is good. Uh, I think sometimes having a teacher may be good on a board. I don't, I don't wanna be dismissive of anybody's right to.
Be on a board, yeah, of course.
Especially if you have institutional knowledge. And so I feel like, you know, this is where I wanted to jump in and, and use my wheelhouse and use my, my experience. Because I think it's needed, you know, like, like I said, if I was able to help assist with budget cutting, you know, budget cutting and, and showing that it wasn't going to hurt the process and the services. You know, people are still hurting, the economy has not come back. You know, everybody is hopeful that the economy, the economy is gonna come back, but you don't know when, you don't know if, um, you know.
Yeah, you don't know if is a big one.
These, these big, you know, these, these massive tax increases that increased our property taxes, they did this when the, when the schools were closed for two years. They increased taxes when they received thousands and thousands of dollars from PPP and Esther Fund.
And they still increased.
Still no cuts, but they did do education, there were educational cuts in services. You know, like what I told you, they were increasing administration salaries, pensions and benefits. They increased funding towards maintenance, transportation, while transportation is always a consistent issue with thirty-three C.
I heard there's a big problem with, uh, with the transportation in the school, for the schools and Homer.
Yes, and so, you know, if part of the problem is, you know, we're talking about quality and I know other candidates discuss this, you know, if you are paying, you know, and you're vetting better and you're paying better salaries, you know, you, you might not have this turnover. You know, like, everybody's got turnover, how do you keep good staff? How do you keep enough staffing? And, you know, so they need to start looking at different alternatives, maybe privatizing it, you know, there's, there are other alternatives, but they're not looking at them, right? But I will tell you, you know, on the opposite side of that, you know, working with the funding for homeless children, I did learn that, you know, they use up a lot of the, the transportation funds. And it's because they can be transported from another county, sometimes another state. It just depends on what each situation is and each one is different. And both, you know, the schools where the district that they're at or the district that they're going to, they have to cost share that. I, I know of one school that had to do eighty thousand dollars a year between DeKalb and Romeoville.
Interesting.
So I, I learned, as I said, it was nice to be on the other side and kind of learn, yes, there were things that I never took into consideration before, right? You know, I, I feel good about my voting record. I feel good about the budgetary decisions that I made and the policies that I made while being a village trustee. That's what I wanna try and bring forth.
That's your experience, yeah.
My institutional knowledge.
Would you consider that probably like your biggest strength as far as?
Why you're running for that?
Why you're running?
Yes, that and I'm not a rubber stamper.
I'm disappointed, it's, it's a very, that's.
I'm gonna do my homework like I always do. As I said, like I, my, my record hasn't changed, I've done nothing to be ashamed of, you know, because I wanna do the best I can for my community. I, this is my legacy. This is also my legacy to my little girl. I wanna make good choices for everyone because I wanna teach her to, how to make the same good choices. You know, I, and I, and I wanna represent everybody fairly. I don't feel that, after going to all those meetings for the past five years, I don't feel that our residents are all being represented.
Agreed.
And, and I'm not the only one, and like I said, after witnessing, and you don't have to go to the meeting, you can watch them on YouTube.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's the crazy part is that everything is so accessible now.
When you go to a meeting, you see the emotions, you feel the emotions and it's a whole different markup, you know, and you can't, you know, you don't understand when you're watching the video, why somebody is crying when they're talking or why they're yelling or why they're raising their voice or why they're shaky. But you see the whole dynamic when you're there and you see how they don't look at them, how they don't respond to them. And when you see that kind of behavior, especially when I've seen parents go up there complaining about knife incidents that, you know, knives were pulled on their children, especially when I've seen where I E Ps were, you know, special needs children were neglected and not getting the services. You've had issues with drugs, this is in the grade schools, you've had issues with alcohol and they turn a complete blind eye, they don't wanna discuss it, you're not supposed to come and discuss it, you're supposed to just stay at home and leave it to us. And I don't, I don't like that dismissive mentality.
Uh, indoctrination.
And then, but it, it discourages people, that intimidation.
That's the whole point, yeah.
Bully mentality intimidates people from wanting to come back and speak up.
Yeah, of course.
And it discourages others.
Yeah.
And I, you know, like when you're asking like, well, what happens when people come screaming and yelling? You deal with it, you know, you let them, ninety percent of it is letting people just have their voice and their say. Sometimes people need to get those emotions out and it's healthy.
Yeah, I agree.
Because you have emotions for a reason. And if you're not listening to your constituents, then you have no business sitting on a board.
A hundred percent. I mean, you, you, you were elected by your constituents to be on that board for a reason.
Like I said, you are that liaison, you are that, that bond between the school and the residents. And if you can't be that liaison, you can't listen, you can't, and, you know, I'm a big.
If you don't take that job seriously, either, it's another thing, because you're, obviously you're there for free, right? You don't really, you, you could be doing other things than sitting on the board and doing, you know.
Yes.
Take, trying to make the right decisions.
I've seen people not at thirty-three C, but I've seen people fall asleep.
Of course.
At board meetings.
I mean, it's not surprising.
And, and part of you wants to laugh, part of you wants to cry and then the other part is like WTF, you know what I mean?
Why are you here?
How are you?
Getting on is one thing, but you have to commit to the position, right?
It is.
It's not just a one-year thing.
It's a hard job, but I look at the payoff. If you can, um, you know, if you can create or improve policies, if you could be a part of the process that pushes for our children to have better proficiency rates, if you can push for better safety policies that, that basically puts your children in a bubble, because the school is supposed to be a safe place, right?
A hundred percent.
Take the politics out of everything, I'm talking about the common sense issues. And that's what I think everybody that I see running, um, most of them all want, that, that are newcomers to this. The ones that aren't the incumbents, they want more, they want better. Everything, you know, like, maybe it's because I'm a parent, but I look at, everything with our future is our children. Everything that we do affects them. You have to protect them as long as you can, but you also have to give them the tools to succeed, to progress. And I'm not seeing it with our local school board. I'm just not. And I, I'm, I'm not saying that they're horrible hateful people, I'm not picking on their politics, I'm leaving that out of it. I'm just looking at the facts, the numbers, the policies that don't exist and their actions, that, it's actually what it is, is no action on the board. I'm seeing rubber stampers, yes, 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 to whatever is proposed to them by staff and superintendents.
Well, hopefully we can get somebody in like yourself who can actually go deep, deep, you know, dig, dig deep into detail.
Willing to.
Willing to, well, yeah, and doing the research at the same time, right? Cause you have to do your research on what, 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 what those things are that are written, right?
Due diligence.
Yeah, but I mean, it's sure, yeah, it's not a paying job in terms of this, but for the whole of the community, it's a good thing.
If you're not gonna do the work for the, it's four years, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're not gonna do the work for four years, don't run. I mean.
I mean, yeah, a hundred percent.
You're committing to something over four, you know.
You're committing to the.
It's a long-term relationship you're setting up, you're setting yourself in.
You're committing to our children's futures.
Yep.
But you're also committing to making maybe, taking the right steps and, and the people that live here currently that even have children that are going to school, but the money's still being collected in taxes, right? Efficiency at the end of the day.
I mean, how many people wanna start a family or, you know, they're, when you're buying a house, you look at, you look at.
The schools.
Do you look at the schools, right?
Yeah.
Now, you know, after these, after these episodes, I'm kinda gonna second guess everything I see on like Zillow or something when it comes to school ratings because it's like, compared to what?
Exactly, and, and so we're, we're top rated for everything, but when you go back to the proficiency rates, the scores have continued to plummet. They're not getting better. Um, and you're talking about on a whole, so it's, it's not just one school. You can't, I, I can't just beat up thirty-three C, I think they're just, you know, when ISB is in control of everything, right? And if ISB is in control of the school board.
Which is ISB is short for Illinois.
Illinois State Board of Education, you know, they have a lot invested in getting things to be voted the right way. You know, there's, you can't be a rubber stamper, you have to stand up once in a while and you have to do your due diligence. I'm not seeing it on any of our districts at all. And, and that's what made me wanna get in the game and, and help out. You know, we have a lot of great candidates that are running, um, and everybody's running separately for their own reasons. There's nobody who's a slate, um, and I think that's the way it should be. I think that each unique person brings unique gifts with them. Every gift is different. And so just because I'm on a village board and I, I know how to do this, that, and as, as a fiduciary, it doesn't mean that it takes away from anybody else that's stepping into the ring, you know? There's a lot of abuse that goes on now, unfortunately with social media, and it isn't just social media. You get people who stalk people's homes, drive past them, throw things, they steal things, um, they harass our children. You know, that's, that's not, you're gonna discourage good people from trying to get in the ring and do the right thing. And.
That is a tactic, so.
This is, and, and this is, this is Homer's politics, it's disgusting.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be like that, like I said, it's, this is not personal, this is business, this is doing the right thing for our children, for our community, for our taxpayers. It affects all of us, not just a few people.
You're not gonna make an impact from harassing people.
No.
You know, you're.
Oh, you're gonna make an impact by making it, but either.
You're gonna scare good people away.
Well, you that or you're gonna make people hard, fight harder. So it's.
I mean, if you.
That's what I'm saying.
If you want an impact, you go to these meetings, you raise your voice in the right, in the right places.
Yeah.
Not, you know.
I mean, hopefully, you know, like I said, we are not, you know, we're not very well-known and whatnot, but hopefully this conversation.
Reaches some people.
And opens up some of the eyes on.
I think what you guys are doing is amazing, just paying attention to the school board, you know, candidates is amazing. There's a lot of issues that affect our township, our village, our schools. But nobody ever pays attention to the school boards, nobody. And I love that you guys are doing this. And, you know, and, and look at what a strong Polish community we have now here in Homer and Lithuania. And so everybody needs to have the courage to step up and either run or they need to have the courage to step up and vote.
Yep.
And, and that's why I, I don't just plead with everybody to vote, please register to vote. Your, your voice does matter and, and it's not just the children that need it, the residents need it too.
Yep, a hundred percent. What's your, uh, what would be your final message before we wrap it up?
Um.
That was it?
I said so much, you know?
Do you have anything? Well, yeah, you said a lot of stuff.
I, you know, I just wanna remind like what we're saying, you know, it's, what is the job of a school board member? Because it's, it's hard, you know, and that's why I said I always take so many darn notes, but, um, you know, it's, it's to set policy. It's to hire and evaluate the school superintendents, it's for budget management, it's for monitoring student achievement and programs and to ensure that accountability and of the districts and their performance, right? You want progress for the children. Make sure that they achieve their goals. I don't even hear what the goals are. And, and I'm okay with, you know, when you're talking about making improvements, of course, a lot of these schools are outdated and, and they, the kids have outgrown, you know, the space. We had, we get more and more and our dem, our demographics have changed since twenty twenty, I could tell you, you know, being part of the village, that, you know, a lot of people, they flew from the city.
Oh, yeah.
They came out here, they want the same amenities that we had in the city and it's not, it's different out here, we don't have a park district. You know, the schools need to accommodate more of that as well. And I don't think there's enough, right? I wanna know what's happened with all this funding and the surplus funding that they get, why can't our children have more? You know, we, we could give them more amenities if we learned how to budget properly.
Well, that's a missing skill in a lot of different parts, different aspects.
Those are taboo words and so we need to get back to basics for things that work. How do we budget effectively? How do we do more with less? It's no different than your own personal bank account, right?
Exactly.
And, you know, you can only keep going a certain route for so long before it implodes. You know, and if it's true, you know, that funding is gonna be cut from the Department of Education, a lot of grant funding is gonna dry up and disappear. This is where these school boards right now really need to have people who, who are willing to fight the good fight to make sure that our children are funded properly and that money is spent wisely, because a lot less is going to be coming to our schools.
Exactly.
So this election specifically has a lot of importance to it for that. So that's, I guess if I wanna add something, that's why I really wanna tell people, you need to vote for people that are actually going to do their due diligence on those school boards.
You touched on a big point that I completely forgot about, the Department of Education.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's already started.
So I mean, I think about that, you know, if, if you have people in there right now that are, will just approve anything right now, what happens when those budgets get slashed? You know, they don't really have a choice, what are they gonna do?
Well, they're gonna have to make cuts somewhere and they might make cuts in the wrong place if they're, if they're, if they're forced to make cuts.
And you're gonna have to be, they're gonna, you're gonna have to hold them responsible for that.
Yeah.
As to what, what got you, what, how did you guys get to that point?
Well, instead of looking at efficiency on certain aspects of where the money's spent, they're just gonna make a cut here and there and, you know, cut programs or whatever. You don't really wanna do that. You wanna actually make sure that the money's being spent well, right?
Yeah.
At the end of the day, so.
But that doesn't always happen.
It doesn't, yeah.
So when I worked with the grant funding for the homeless youths last year, they, you know, part of that was, I was constantly being told, Jen, just spend it, just spend it, just spend it. It has to be spent by such and such date and it has to be in such and such categories. And I'm like, I don't wanna go to prison. I wanna spend it on sustainable items that are going to get these children through the school year.
Yeah.
And you can't give them, like, so with that funding, you couldn't give them food and you couldn't give them housing, the things that they needed the most, right? Um, but you gave them clothing, you could give them school supplies and it was just like, spend, spend, spend. And I'm like, don't worry about it when it runs out, it, they, they tell you, well, you're gonna be getting millions more, so don't worry. It ju- it just, it's like money that falls off a tree and just keeps coming your way.
It's like a federal deficit.
And no policies.
Shows up at your door.
No handwritten policies were in place for a lot of the spending and it drove me nuts. So the accountability isn't even there on the state level. So this is huge what's coming through with the Department of Education and I don't really hear our schools or the school boards talking about this. And I'm like, yeehaw, this is important.
I'll make sure.